It is now 6:01 PM on October the 3rd, 2023. I'd like to welcome you all to Richland County Council's regular session. Madam Clerk, will you please take the row?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry. Yes, right, take the row.
Branham.
Here.
Pew.
Here.
McBride.
Here.
Livingston.
Here.
Terracio. Weaver.
Here.
Barron.
Here.
Walker.
Here.
Mackey.
Here.
English.
Present.
Newton.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And also, I spoke with Councilwoman Terracio, and she informed me that she will be attending this evening's meeting virtually. I know she has a personal matter that she has to attend to, but at some point she should sign on. I think I also forgot to say that this meeting is now called to order. Before I move to the next item on the agenda, which is the invocation, I wanted to just take a moment at the top of the meeting to acknowledge the loss of a dear member of the Richland County family, as well as a huge loss to our community, and that is Richland County Sheriff's Deputy Jacob Eric Sauerin, who lost his life in the line of duty this past Friday night pursuant to a fatal car crash. He was only 23 years old, and by all accounts was someone who was a rising star in the law enforcement field. We also have present this evening with us our Deputy Chief from the Richland County Sheriff's Department, Chief Harry Polis. Good to see you this evening, Chief. Just allow me to say that, you know, oftentimes when we have our political discourse around government, the conversations tend to center usually around the size and the scope of government and what gets lost in that conversation. It's the fact that we have real people, you know, who come every day, you know, work on behalf of their government, whether it's at the federal level, state level, local level, but they come every day offering their talents, their gifts, their expertise, their knowledge, and they do it all with the aim of trying to promote the safety, the welfare, and the health, you know, of the places where they live. And that just for whatever reason seems to, it gets lost, but I wanted to just put that back before everyone here tonight to understand, you know, that... And I'm sorry, I'm kind of at a loss for words here because I've been thinking about this quite a bit since, you know, this incident has happened, this tragedy's unfolded, so if I sound a bit inarticulate, you know, please just forgive me. But in any event, I just, you know, want to, want everyone out there to be reminded that these are true public servants, you know, who come to work every day, and sometimes they have to pay the ultimate sacrifice, which is what happened with Deputy Jacob Sauerin. Chief Polis, please note that Richland County Council, we are standing behind the men and women of the Richland County Sheriff's Department. Our thoughts and prayers are certainly, you know, with Deputy Sauerin and his family as well. And if we would, I would like everyone to just observe a 30-second moment of silence in memory of Deputy Sauerin. Thank you, everyone.
I would like to invite everyone to bow their heads. God, we like to come to you in prayer and just thank you. Thank you for the grace and mercy that you give us on a daily basis. Thank you for covering us, even though at times we may not understand why things happen. We understand it's in your will. We ask that you continue to cover our county as we have experienced so much loss this year, this week, and just give us the grace to understand why. We also like to ask you to give this council the wisdom and the clear mind to make decisions as we continue to handle the people business. We'd like to leave you and ask you to leave, we'd like to ask all these things in your son Christ Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me as I deliver the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Pew. Next item on the agenda is Item 4, Presentation of Proclamations. Item 4A, your proclamation recognizes reconciliation ministries and declaring October as National Substance Abuse Prevention Month. That will be given by the Honorable Don Weaver. Councilman Weaver, you recognize, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Whereas a local faith-based nonprofit organization serves as a vital connecting point between men and women suffering from addiction and the donors, volunteers, and advocates who can assist them in experiencing life-changing freedom from addiction, and whereas reconciliation ministries provides residential recovery programs designed to help individuals establish a strong foundation for recovery built on biblical principles, mend broken relationships, and transition back into the community. And whereas since 2017, the organization has provided a much-needed community resource to help people recover from substance abuse resulting in transformed lives and restored family connections. And whereas in a nation where 94% of U.S. residents 12 and older with substance abuse problems fail to receive treatment, and where in South Carolina drug overdoses have quadrupled over the past 10 years. Now therefore be it proclaimed that Richland County Council recognizes and honors reconciliation ministries for its contributions to Richland County and does hereby declare October 2023 as Substance Abuse Prevention Month in Richland County. Council supports reconciliation ministries and other partners' efforts to address problems of substance abuse and addiction in our community. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
You recognize, Mr. Pew?
I would like to first say, when I was first elected in 2020, I had the opportunity to meet the Executive Director for Reconciliation Ministries. The work that they're doing in that community is phenomenal. I've been in Columbia since 1998, and if you know anything about Columbia, you don't want to be caught in bedded downs after the sun goes down. Well, I'm here to say that it's the place where you want to be now. It's a thriving community. They are rebuilding, they're rebuilding homes, they're giving people opportunity, and I've supported them from day one, and I'm going to continue to support them in any efforts that they have because what they're doing is God's work, and they're making sure that they're giving back to the community, and they're giving people a second chance at life. Second, third, fourth, whatever it is, they're giving them a chance to be able to thrive in this world. So I'd just like to say hats off, and I'm proud to be a part of this proclamation, and I'm proud to be able to come and visit this program. And if you haven't visited this program, I would advise anybody to visit this program because it's phenomenal. Thank you.
Councilman Pew or Councilman Weaver, anyone here from reconciliation ministries or...
Yes, sir.
They certainly recognize that they wish to come down and address the body.
Yeah, my name's Ashley Arrington, and I have the honor and the privilege to be the Executive Director at Reconciliation Ministries. Just on behalf of our board, the staff, and the students at Reconciliation Ministries, we just want to say thank you so much for this honor. Thank you for this proclamation. It really does mean a lot to us. The council's support for what we're doing in the community is just tremendous. At Reconciliation Ministries, as you guys already heard, we empower men to overcome their addiction by providing a long-term residential recovery and discipleship program. This year, we've had the opportunity to help 34 individuals. We've helped people experience 3,673 days of sobriety and served over 11,000 meals to our students in our program as well as our community. And I just want to share those statistics. They're not just numbers, but these are lives that have been transformed. These are families and generations that'll forever be changed because of council's support, because of generous people in our community. And so again, we just want to thank you guys for this honor. It truly is a privilege to be a part of what's going on in this community.
Barron.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next item will be...
Mr. Chair.
Yes, who's speaking?
This is Allison, this is Allison Terracio.
You recognize, Councilwoman?
Thank you. Am I permitted to vote in this meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
You are.
So just wanted to let you all know that I'm here and prepared to vote.
Okay. Madam Clerk, will you take Mr. Terracio's vote?
Yes, sir. Mr. Terracio, you voted in favor.
Thank you. I would vote yes on the approval of the minutes.
Thank you.
Both sets. Thank you.
Mr. Terracio. All right. Next item on the agenda is Item 6, Adoption of the Agenda. Any changes, additions, or deletions you recognize? Mr. Wright?
Mr. Chair, there is one change. Number 7B, it should be South Carolina Code Section 30-4-78-1.
Rather than subsection 2?
Right. Rather than 2 and 5, it should be one, just one.
Just one? Okay. Any additional changes, additions, or deletions you recognize? Mr. Branham?
I wanted to ask that the Item 14C be removed from the consent agenda, just so we can have some discussion on that.
Well, I believe, let's wait till we get to that portion of the agenda. Mr. Branham, what would happen is, once we get there, we get to Item 14, then you can just make your motion at that time to remove it as a consent item.
Okay, thank you.
So noted. Any additional additions or changes to the agenda? There being none, entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as amended. So moved.
Okay.
It's been moved to properly. Second, any discussion? There being none. Madam Clerk?
Branham.
Yes.
Pew.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Terracio.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Barron.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Next item on the agenda is Item 7, Report of the Attorney for Executive Session Items. Mr. Wright, you recognize?
Yes, Mr. Chair. We have five items for executive session. 7A is legal options regarding funding for capital projects and transportation projects pursuant to Code Section 30-4-78-2 and 5. B is county attorney contract, Section 30-4-78-1. C, Scout Motors Legal Update pursuant to Code Section 30-4-78-2 and 5. D, Property Inquiry, 1430 Colonial Life Boulevard pursuant to Code Section 30-4-78-2 and 5, and Property Inquiry, 1221 Gregg Street pursuant to Code Section 30-4-78-2 and 5.
So, Wright, I'm assuming that only Item 7A and 7C have outside legal counsel?
That's correct.
And the remaining items do not?
That's correct.
All right. Entertain a motion going to executive session with respect to Items 7A and 7C.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second?
It's been moved to properly. Second, any discussion? There being none. Madam Clerk?
Branham.
Yes.
Pew.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Terracio.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Barron.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion passes.
In executive session. In executive session.
Yes, been moved to property second. Any discussion? There being none. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Branham.
Yes.
Pugh.
Yes.
McBride. Livingston. Tratio. Weaver.
Yes.
Behren.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton. Motion passes.
Record reflect that council went into executive session with respect to items seven A and seven C pursuant to statute thirty dash four dash seventy eight two and in subsection five as well as statute thirty dash four dash seventy eight two and subsection five with respect to both items. No action was taken and instead council received legal advice. Next item on the agenda is item eight, citizens' input for items on the agenda not requiring any public hearing. Madam Vice Chair, anyone sign up to speak?
Mr. Chair, I apologize. So we did not have anyone sign up on the official sheet, but I have a note sitting here that we had a few people arrive late and would like and missed the sign up for citizens' input. However, I don't have clarification on what item they missed sign up for.
It's possible to get clarification for what item they intended to sign up for. Do you recognize, Madam Clerk?
They want to speak regarding the Olympia Mill Village area.
All right, so, okay, thank you. I'm just confirming this is for items on the agenda not requiring a public hearing. So, and I say that because if these issues are related to the land development code, there is a public hearing for that. So that would not be under item eight A.
That is my understanding.
Okay. So just for the record, so I can clarify, eight A is for items on the agenda not requiring a public hearing. This item is related to the land development code, which, no, it's not related to it. ACA Jensen, please.
Mr. Chair.
Recognize, Mr. Jensen.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Jensen, let me just stop you just for a second. No signage, please. No signage. I appreciate the enthusiasm, but we'll get it sorted out. Thank you. You recognize, Mr. Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. ACA Jensen, for the record, I spoke this afternoon with Ms. Sherri Jako from the Olympia community, and they requested an opportunity to speak this evening, and it is regarding an item that is not on the agenda. And they were informed that it could not be related to the land development code as that is an item that has had a public hearing, and the text will have a public hearing in the future, assuming council goes in that direction. So I've communicated to them the parameters, and so this is an item that is an administrative item that has nothing to do with an item that is before council.
Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you. So following the statement that ACA Jensen has provided, Mr. Chair, if you would, I request to add these folks to item A even though they missed the sign up. All right, so I will call your name, ask that you come down to the microphone. You need to state your first and last name as well as your address for the record, and then you'll be given two minutes to speak. You'll hear a timer that'll notify you when those two minutes have ended, and I ask you to please end your remarks at that time. Also, remember, please, during your remarks, to not call out any council members or staff or defame them in any way during your remarks.
Point of order, pardon me before you call them. I guess I just want to be clear. If we have people that didn't sign up, I'm happy to let people speak, but that didn't sign up in time, does that require a vote by the body to essentially either suspend the rules or add them to our agenda?
Oh, Mr. Wright, would it require a vote? I mean, I guess what I'm hearing is that they, did they not sign up in time? Or was it an attempt to sign up and something went awry, so they weren't able to?
Mr. Chair, you can allow someone to sign up to speak on a particular section, but if you want, if you wanted to do, like I said, just allow anyone who hasn't signed up, you would need to suspend the rules. But at this point, if, even if they relate, you can allow someone to sign up.
It can still be allowed to sign up, and that would, and then we wouldn't be required to take a vote to suspend the rules. They can just sign up at this point.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you. I guess, and I just wanted to be clear because many people come to our meetings, and this won't be the last time. So I just wanted to make sure we're following whatever the appropriate protocol is.
Right. And I think that, as far as that part, if you allow someone to sign up at this point, as chair, you can allow that. But if you want someone to be able to speak without signing up, you would have to take a vote to suspend the rules.
Well, at least, maybe I didn't hear it correctly. What I'm hearing is that there was an attempt by these folks to sign up, but I guess for whatever reason, it did not happen. And so I can either, we, council could take a vote to suspend the rules, or as chair, I can just allow them to sign up. And under most circumstances, that's not something I would allow because usually a person would have made an attempt to sign up. But what I'm hearing is that there was an attempt made to sign up, and for whatever reason, it just didn't happen in a timely manner. Is that correct, Mr. Jensen or Ms. Only?
Ms. Only.
That's correct.
Okay. So you recognize, Ms. McBride?
Just to make sure we're staying in order, and this doesn't come up again when somebody said that we weren't allowed. I would like to move to.
A second.
A second.
Move to property second. Any discussion? There being none. Ms. Only.
Branham.
Oh.
Pugh.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Tratio. Weaver.
Yes.
Behren.
Yes.
Walker.
Oh.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of council for allowing these speakers to speak this evening. As previously stated, the rules do apply. I won't restate them again. First up is Sherri. And next, Teresa, would you also please come down and be ready at the next microphone?
Thank you so much. I appreciate the opportunity. My name is Sherri Jako. I live at eleven sixty-six Olympia Avenue. I'm speaking on behalf of the We Are Olympia Community Organization. Our community is upset about the proposed demolition and building that has been permitted at eleven thirty-two and eleven twenty-eight Olympia Avenue. We're asking council to put a hold on these permits tonight. We're grateful for council's positive response last spring to create an absentee landlord ordinance. Since February this year, two thousand twenty-three, we've met with numerous county officials as we continue voicing concerns about the development issues in our community. We prepared a packet of materials that I think that you will be distributed either now or a little bit later on. We feel that Olympia is being violated with the lack of protection from unregulated new development. Our historic neighborhood has been left vulnerable to monetary interest that take advantage of the lack of regulation that we have. Because Olympia Mill Village historic overlay has been dormant for almost two years, our community is kind of like a sitting duck for developers with big bucks. Our community representatives are here tonight to ask that you put a hold on the demolition and building permits that were issued for eleven twenty-eight and eleven thirty-two Olympia Avenue that were issued on August the thirtieth. We need appropriate protections put into place that will preserve our local county history that we are struggling to maintain here in Olympia. On a personal note, I find it unconscionable that developers with deep pockets can come in and alter a hundred and twenty years of our Richland County history so readily.
Mr. Chair.
Recognize, Mr. Wright.
Everyone has, everyone has the right to speak, but I would say that county council doesn't have the authority to hold or deny permitting. It's like either they meet the requirements or they don't, and county council doesn't really have the authority to stop it.
Thank you, Mr. Wright.
Thank you.
Good evening, county council. My name is Teresa Hodge. My husband and I own property at twelve oh nine Whitney Street, and our daughter and her family currently reside there. If you have a packet, I'd like to talk to you briefly. It's on the back. It's concerning the sewer in the Olympia community, something you don't normally see from above ground. And I'd just like to go through some things with you concerning the sewer. This map was taking from, taken from the Thomason Engineering map dated October of nineteen thirty-nine, when the installation occurred in Olympia. The green line that you show on the back is actually the main trunk line for the sewer line that serves this portion of Olympia. It flows from north to south or from the top to the bottom of the page. This line is currently on the eleven thirty-two tract of property, and because of that, we are asking that the setbacks, which are normally seven and a half feet from the sidelines, be increased such that the sewer can be maintained by the city of Columbia. Also shown on this map is a red line that services the eleven thirty-four property. This is currently the Busby property. This sewer lateral crosses the entire property of eleven thirty-two to get into the gravity sewer there that runs north and south. By my calculations, with the twenty-five foot setback and the forty-nine foot building footprint, this puts this sewer lateral either on top or, excuse me, underneath the building footprint or just adjacent to the building footprint. So it really leaves no room for this sewer lateral to be maintained. So with that, we'd like for county council to. to review these setbacks and this information presented concerning the sewer with respect to this development. Thank you.
Next is Jason and Joby.
Good evening. My name is Jason Jaco. I'm a property owner and resident at 931 Texas Street in Olympia. As a property owner in Olympia, I have some concerns about the proposed development at 1132 and 1128 Olympia Avenue. We had a community meeting in September 18th, where we met the owner and builder, developer of the property. And we proposed a question to them about parking, and how they plan to provide space and accommodate for the number of proposed residents. Firstly, the lot size simply does not permit enough parking spaces to accommodate 16 cars. And without sufficient parking, residents and visitors will be forced to park on the street, exacerbating the already crowded intersection. And this will create an unsafe conditions for pedestrians and result in overcrowding of the, on the on-street parking. Furthermore, this is important to know that this particular intersection is frequently used by numerous 18-wheel semi-trucks that go to southeastern concrete. They use this as their only means of egress to their business and operations. And if the street was blocked or parked on both sides of the streets, they may not have access to their, to their, to the business. We urge the responsible authorities and developers to reconsider their plans and prioritize the safety and convenience of our community. Instead of demolishing a historical property with proper parking provisions, we suggest exploring alternate solutions that preserve the historical significance of the area while meeting the housing needs of the residents. By working together, we can find a solution that respects our community's heritage, promotes safety, and ensures the harmonious coexistence for all stakeholders. Let us make thoughtful decisions that enhance the Olympia and Mill District's character and maintenance.
That is your time, sir. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Joby Castain. I'm proud to be here and appreciate you letting me speak. I live at 1027 Hammerick Street, and I'm a lifelong resident of the Olympia Mill Village. And you can tell by the color of my hair, that's a long time. I'm here to focus on if this project goes forward, it is going to have an adverse effect on public safety, because there will be nowhere to park, but in the right way, which is going to force more Carolina students and longtime residents, if you walk, to walk in the street. And I see kids all the time walking their dogs. It's going to make this a very prominent intersection. It's catty-cornered across the street from St. Lutheran Church, where I go. It's going to create, again, adverse influence on public safety. And overall, it's going to be an adverse influence on the quality of life. We have enough traffic in Olympia as it is, with trains at Hemisen. In fact, I got stopped by a train coming here tonight without more traffic. At some point, the county council's got to realize you can't keep putting the density into Olympia at the same time without increasing the infrastructure to handle that. And this is just going to be another example. And as said earlier, it's also going to destroy historic property. There are plenty of other places the developer can build, or he can come back with an alternate proposal that wouldn't be as adverse. So I'd hope the council will consider that. Thank y'all very much. Thank you. I know y'all do a great job. So, thank you.
Thank you. Joe.
Pardon me, I have vertigo. How do you do? Good evening. My name is Joe Weider. I live at 224 William Street, and I'm a member of the Mill District Alliance. First of all, I wanted to thank council for initiating and supporting and voting for the Capital City Mill District Plan, which is, you know, a great start for our whole community. And secondly, for having the wisdom, for spending some of your neighborhood improvement monies to have historical consultants come to the Mill Village and spend a few days with us at the Olympia Museum, discussing what kind of historic overlay we should have for the, that was three years ago. That plan has been implemented in terms of giving to the Neighborhood Improvement Committee, or whatever it's called, whatever. And I've been told by the staff there that if that plan was in place, and I understand it's just a matter of time until it is put in place, that this proposal by this developer for the demolition and development of this property would be summarily dismissed as a matter of policy, not an aesthetic decision, or just on the basis of preserving what we have left in Olympia and the Mill District. So I ask you, could we please just place a moratorium on this request for a couple of months until we get the overlay in place and preserve what little heritage we have left, particularly on the avenue there? Because there's, you know, it's been picked by developers, and it's changing. It's losing its character. And we'd like to preserve that character. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So that is all that I have on this sheet as far as names that were submitted. Speaker five was Joby. Come on, ma'am. You're the last one. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, good. Chairperson Walker. Esteemed county representatives, my name's Vi Henley. I live at 104 Alabama Street, and I've lived in the neighborhood for 40 years. This project includes two buildings, four apartments, including four bedrooms with private bathrooms, 16 beds in total, specifically designed for student rental market, 16 cars leased by the bedroom with access to a common kitchen and living space. A family can afford $3,600 a month rent. The potential loss, also of a 144-year-old heritage oak tree. This project is not family housing. They are boarding houses per Richland County and South Carolina code, allowed only by special exception and having different building code requirements. I live behind two illegal boarding houses in Olympia, one with eight unrelated students and the other with five. My neighbors and I endure 13 cars plus those of their guests blocking streets and driveways, a blatant disrespect for home maintenance, overflowing garbage cans left on the street, piles of furniture and litter everywhere, loud parties, and all the rude behavior that comes with them. This body paid for and adopted the Columbia Area Mill District area plan. The well-planned development, as outlined in the plan, along with the now-completed Olympia historic overlay, will enhance the historic value, excuse me, of the village and the quality of life for its residents. Until the plan and overlay are codified, we ask council to enact a moratorium on all current and future permitting of new construction and demolition projects. Failure to do so will cause further harm to the historic character of the Olympia Mill Village and our quality of life. Appreciate your time and listening. Thanks so very much.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, that includes all individuals. Is that correct?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Next item on the agenda is Item Nine. Citizens' input must pertain to Richland County matters not on the agenda. Items for which a public hearing is required or a public hearing has been scheduled cannot be addressed at this time. Madam Vice Chair, anyone sign up to speak?
Yes, Mr. Chair. We had two individuals sign up to speak this evening. The first is Scott Graves.
He had to leave.
Thank you. Next is Elaine DeBose, boss.
Hi, I'm Elaine DeBose. Reside at 7262 Sunview Drive, 29209. I'm here on behalf of all the residents of Lower Richland, begging you to please restore the emergency spillway of our once beautiful Pine Wood Lake Park that was damaged by the Thousand Year Flood, but that's been eight years. And there is FEMA money to repair that. Thankfully, our District 11 representative is hoping to clear some of the trees and vegetation. The lake is already at its lowest point, because I've been out and checked it. The lake currently has grown up so badly that it's a jungle, and it's a total embarrassment. With the influx of new housing, Lower Richland has very few amenities to attract new neighbors, except we've got fast food and coffee shops. That's all we have. Now, look at Richland Northeast. It has Sesquicore Park. Then look at Richland Southeast. We don't have any of that. We're being discriminated against until our Pine Wood Lake Park is restored. Also, please bring back the fabulous Foundation, whose activities brought so much joy and excitement to those of all ages. Our park once attracted over 64,000 visitors, including those of all ages. And all of Richland County will benefit from this. Picnics, walking trails, graduations, holiday events, all beside that beautiful lake. So I beg of you, please make it happen, and I thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, that includes all individuals that signed up to speak this evening.
Vice Chair, next item on the agenda is Item 10, report of the county administrator. I would like to recognize Mr. Brown, but is he online, or?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair.
You recognize Mr. Brown, and good evening to you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, and members of council. The first item listed under the agenda for report of the county administrator is 10A. One, the Soil and Water Conservation District Annual Report. Mr. Chair, I believe you have in the audience Mr. Kenneth Mullis, who is the chairman. He's going to give a brief report related to the Soil and Water Conservation District as a part of their annual report out to county council. You will recognize him, Mr. Chair.
You recognize, sir.
Mr. Chair, and all members of county council, I appreciate this opportunity to come before you. My name's Kenny Mullis, Chair of the Richland Soil and Water Conservation District. Conservation districts are a subdivision of state government, which were created in South Carolina, by South Carolina law in 1937, as part of the national response to the Dust Bowl. There are 46 conservation districts in South Carolina whose jurisdictions correspond to county boundaries. Districts exist in all 50 states and U.S. territories, and they exist to develop and implement conservation activities within their jurisdictions. Here in Richland County, our conservation district's programs target agricultural producers, teachers, students, and the general public. Districts receive financial support from federal, state, and local sources. The Richland District's cash operating budget is approximately $76,000 a year. We receive $15,000 a year from the U.S. Department of Ag, and approximately $36,000 a year from grants and donations from individuals and businesses. And we have to, we have to compete for all those dollars every, every year. But we have some reoccurring funds that come from the state legislature through DNR for $25,000 a year. We're also very grateful to receive in-kind staff support from Richland County. Richland County Council has provided staff support for the Conservation District since at least the 1970s. And you're currently supporting our work with two and a half full-time equivalent staff positions in the Richland County Conservation Division. I'm here tonight to tell you how we have leveraged those staff positions to promote natural resources, natural resource conservation in the 2022-2023 fiscal year. In the past year, we've hosted three educational events promoting agricultural conservation practices and farm bill programs for farmers and natural resource professionals. We also provide low-cost access to a no-till drill, which was used to protect soil health on 567 acres of cultivated land. We awarded 10 mini-grants totaling $7,000 to support conservation education in local schools. These grants supported projects such as classroom hydroponics at Weber Elementary and container gardening at Pace Academy. During this time, our staff also led several professional development events for more than 200 teachers and educators across the state. Over the past 12 months, we provided 86 conservation programs on topics including soil health, water quality, and composting for 2,146 students at 23 schools and education sites. We hosted a youth poster contest that received entries from 75 students at nine schools, and the winners go on to compete on a statewide competition. We also co-hosted the South Carolina Envirathon, a program that helps high school students become environmentally aware, action-oriented students. And that winner competes in a North American competition. We serve as a community adopt, community adopt-a-stream hub and help local residents monitor and protect water quality. This year, the Conservation District took on an administrative, administration of the Richland County Ag and Art Tour, and attracted more than 3,000 visitors and 15 agricultural tour sites in Columbia, Blythewood, and Eastover. Our seed sanctuary program promotes home gardening, food security, and pollinator, pollinator conservation by providing vegetable, herb, and wildfire seeds to residents at no cost. In the past year, we distributed more than 5,372 seed packets to residents at our two physical locations, 10 pop-up events, and by mail. While we operate with a small staff and a small budget, our model quality programs promote natural resource conservation here in Richland County, as well as across the state. And we and our staff have received numerous recognitions for our work at state and national levels. I'd like to repeat my thanks to Richland County Council for providing staff support for our mission and programs. The environmental challenges our communities face are more pressing today than ever before. But with your help, the Richland Soil and Water Conservation District can make Richland County a better place to live, work, and play. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for that presentation, Mr. Mullis, and thank you for the work of the Richland County Soil and Conservation District as well. Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Moving on to the next items, you have two items that are listed under the administrator's nomination. And those items are related to time matters, and that's why they're before you under this particular section of the agenda. The first item, staff recommends approval of the request of purchase mitigation credits as listed from the Department of Transportation for a request to purchase one wetland credit for the construction of the Blossom Street Bridge Replacement in Richland County at a rate of $20,000. If you look at page 37, I believe, of your agenda packet, you will see that the mitigation, mitigation credit sales will generate $20,000, which will be credited to the transportation penny program. And if you look on page 38, you will see that the county has sufficient credits for its own program, and this will not negatively impact it, so staff recommends approval.
Brown, you need a motion from council authorizing approval of the sale of the, I guess, one mitigation bank credit?
That is correct, Mr. Chair.
Entertain a motion. Move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
And move to properly second. Any discussion? There being none. Madam Clerk?
Branham.
Yes.
Pugh.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Teratio. Weaver.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion passes.
And a motion for reconsideration?
Move to reconsider?
Correct.
And move to properly second. Any discussion? There being none. Madam Clerk?
Branham.
No.
Pugh.
No.
McBride.
No.
Livingston.
No.
Weaver.
No.
Baron.
No.
Walker.
No.
Mackey.
No.
English.
No.
Newton.
No.
Motion fails.
Go on, Mr. Brown.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. The next item, I'm going to read staff's recommendation, and I would ask if you have any direct questions that we bring in Assistant County Administrator Lori Thomas to assist. But staff recommends the approval of an ordinance authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds to fund the acquisition, construction, equipping, rehabilitation, and improve... But staff recommends the approval of an ordinance authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds to fund the acquisition, construction, equipping, rehabilitation, and improvement of certain capital projects, and to refund all or a portion of certain of the county's outstanding general obligation bonds. That request is found on page forty-nine. If you just take just a brief moment and turn to page fifty, you will see a breakdown under the strategic engine of the discussion, which communicates the purpose of this ordinance is to authorize the issuance of bonds for new funds to provide funding for capital projects as outlined below for uses and sources of funds and approved by council on September twelfth, twenty-twenty-three. And then you will see an additional line that says the ordinance is structured such that any modifications or changes in projects that may allow for additional funds availability will allow for funds to be redirected to other capital projects by council approval. So this particular language will allow us to utilize, if council approves, the funding that you see here and any other redirected funds that may become available at a later date. But staff's recommendation is for approval, Mr. Chair, and we're entertaining the questions that you may have at this time.
Or, I guess, we get to any motion if one is forthcoming. Councilman Weaver, you recognized.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I do have one question, Ms. Thomas. On page fifty, you've got listed twenty-five million dollars for Alvin S. Glenn. There's no, there probably has been a breakdown of that twenty-five million in the past. Is there something staff could get to me, not tonight, obviously, but to let me know what the breakdown of the twenty-five million is?
Recognize, Mr.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, Mr. Weaver, if you go back to page seventy-five.
Okay.
There is a financing proposal, and it breaks down the largest components of the Alvin S. Glenn funding. That's the plumbing repairs estimated at about eight million dollars, upgrading remaining six, fourteen, sixteen housing units at four million dollars, security upgrades and a camera system at five million, a jail management system at an estimated six hundred thousand, and an attorney visitation area upgrades of six million dollars.
See it now, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I was not as good on my homework. Okay. I did have a second question, Ms. Chairman, if I can, real quick.
All right, page seventy-eight, you've got debt capacity continues to grow quickly, assuming this passes, by eight to ten million. Doesn't say what? I'm assuming that means per year?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
That is per year, will grow if we vote for this tonight.
Yes, sir. At the current rate, while it does say up to ninety-three million dollars, only seventy-one million would be new funding. Twenty-two million approximately has the capacity to be refunded, which would further increase our capacity to bond as well. With that, that is a bond from two thousand fourteen that may be able to be refunded for some savings, but we would wait to find that out as we get closer to actually selling bonds to see what the market's volatility level yields.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Councilman, Councilman Livingston?
Just quick on page fifty. Now, how much are we actually bonding, you know? It says seven-one-thousand as far as general obligation series two thousand twenty-three. Now, the allocation for DSS, I thought that was money we already have, but that's not the ARP, ARP money?
The seventeen point, on page fifty, if you look at sources of funds, there's seventeen million four-hundred-and-eighty-thousand-three-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars in DSS or in ARPA funds that are allocated for DSS, but the cost of the Family Services Center is forty-nine million one-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars, one-hundred-and-seventy-three-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars.
Bond the difference?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then, then on the attachment one, it says the amount not to exceed, it's written two million dollars, not a two million, but the actual dollar amount listed there is ninety-three. Which one is it?
It's ninety-three. There's a, like I said, there's a refunding for approximately twenty-two thousand dollars, and I will make that correction prior to second reading.
Questions, Ms. Newton, you recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Miss, I'm so tired. I know your last name, and you do too.
Thomas.
Thomas. Thank you. Sorry, Ms. Thomas, sorry. Looking at the seventeen million dollars and change that are ARPA funds, there's also an additional opportunity, depending, that more ARPA funds might come based on a previous council motion that unexpended ARPA funds go to DSS or to the Family Services Center. My question for you is, since my understanding is that that kind of happens automatically because it's a prior council motion, does that also potentially free up funding here if, say, additional funds came from that source?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. And I'm sorry, Ms. Thomas.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Who's?
All right, Mr. Chair, I was going to make a motion to approve the Administrator's recommendation.
Second.
Properly second, discussion, Ms. McBride?
No, I was moving to approval.
Additional discussion? All right, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Branham.
Yes.
Pugh.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Tratio. Weaver.
No.
Baron.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, sir.
I'm sorry, Ms. Thomas. Mr. Wright, with this being an ordinance, I'm assuming this is with a first reading, and so reconsideration wouldn't be appropriate tonight, or?
Yeah, not on the first reading.
Okay, so this is a first reading item. Let's making sure, okay. Mr. Brown, continue on.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That does conclude my report for this evening.
All right, next item on the agenda is item eleven, Report of the Clerk of Council. You recognize Ms. Only?
Yes, sir. I have three reminders. One is for the twenty-twenty-three Annual Planning Conference, which is this Saturday from eleven to two at the Medallion Conference Center. This is on your calendar, but we just wanted to remind you. And then, secondly, the twenty-twenty-three SCA Institute and Fall Advocacy, that is all, the registration for that is open. It closes October the thirteenth, so if anyone would like to attend, please get with the clerk's office. And lastly, just a reminder that open enrollment for the county's benefits is open from October the first to the thirty-first. You're welcome, and that completes my report.
Next item on the agenda is item twelve, Report of the Chair. At this time, the chair does not have any announcements or updates with the body. Next item is our public hearings, item thirteen A, An Ordinance Affirming the Provisions of Ordinance Number Fifty-eight dash one-six H.R. related to the Office of Small Business Opportunities. That public hearing is now open. Madam Vice Chair, anyone sign up to speak?
No, Mr. Chair.
That public hearing is now closed. Next item on the agenda is item fourteen, Approval of Consent Items. Mr. Branham, I believe you had something you wanted to mention with respect to item fourteen earlier?
I did have some questions as to item fourteen C for staff, so if that means we need to remove it from the consent agenda, that would be my motion.
Mr. Chair.
You recognize, Ms. Newton?
Move to approve items fourteen A and B.
Second. Second. All right, well, it's been moved to properly second, no discussions needed, and Ms. Newton, thank you for reminding me of, you know, how this works when we get to consent items. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Branham.
Yes.
Pugh.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Tratio. Weaver.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next item on the agenda is item fourteen C. I entertain a motion. Move approval, Mr. Chair.
Second.
It's been moved to properly second. Any discussion? Councilman Branham, you recognize, and then Madam Vice Chair.
If I could ask Ms. Thomas to step forward. And while she does, just wanted to comment, you know, this was two-hundred-and-seventeen pages of our packet, which was very helpful to help me get up-to-date on some of the historical dealings with the convention center, the funding, how that had taken place, the fact that we, we, along with the city of Columbia, and I think Lexington County as well, had contributed over a twenty-year period paying off the bond for the construction of the convention center. Is that right, Ms. Thomas?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay. And, and so now, during this last calendar year, or within the last twelve months, that bond's been paid in full now, is that right?
Yes, sir, it was.
Okay. And, and so now where we are is, in my understanding of the IGA, the agreement that laid the foundation for all this, the, the fee that the city and the county had levied, the three percent hotel bill fee, had been funding the payment on the debt service as well as towards some operational expenses and marketing as well. Is that right?
Yes, sir, that's my understanding.
Okay. And so my understanding of the convention center's request now is, is maybe something new or different in that we're now moving away from the period of paying towards debt service, and now they're asking for some, an additional allocation of that fee to go towards operating and marketing? Is that right?
Yes, sir. My understanding is that while the prior amount that we paid represented a good portion of what came from the city of Columbia, Richland County, and Lexington County, parts of those funds were used for operations. It's also possible that our, our portion was more aligned with what would have considered debt service at the time because, when you combined all the sources together, because we actually paid the funds to the city of Columbia to be remitted to the convention center. So what is being requested now is for operating funds.
What is the dollar amount that's being requested?
At the last, at the last meeting before council, the recommendation or the request was for fifty percent of what's called the tourism development fee, which is also our local accommodations tax for Richland County. Currently, that equates to slightly over seven-hundred thousand, between seven-hundred and seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars in the last collection year. But of course, that amount does vary if it's based strictly upon a percentage.
All right, well, thank you. I don't remember if we got to a motion yet. I don't think we have, but, but I'm.
We're currently under motion. Councilman Branham, this is the discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
So I would just ask, or I want to affirm, is the motion on the table that we fund at that level for, for one year, or is it in perpetuity? What is it?
Recognize, Mr. Wright?
And, and I was going to state about that, too. My concern is that council is not supposed to bind future councils, so generally, we either renew every year or no more than four or five years because of that, so I think that we would have to restrict it to some, to a certain degree, and not, it couldn't be in perpetuity.
Vice Chair, and then Mr. Livingston.
Thank you.
And then Ms. Baron.
Thank you. I just want to point out initially, this item was under consent. This item did come before the A and F Committee. As Chair of A and F Committee, our typical process is that I would then be able to speak upon that recommendation and what the committee voted on. So this is, was on consent items because the A and F Committee unanimously approved and supported this request, and so it came here under consent. That's how it gets on consent, and I think coming out of that, I was not able to fully speak upon A and F's recommendation of the full support of this. So I just wanted to state that for the record, that this full document was discussed in committee in depth, and it had unanimous support of that committee, and that is A and F's recommendation is to support the request as asked.
Before you respond, Mr. Branham, let me get to Mr. Livingston, and then I'm going to come to Ms. Baron.
Mr. Chairman, I'll speak briefly to the fee. Now, we collect the fee and give it to the city, our portion. Now, remember now, when the city provided funding to the convention and visiting bureau, two-thirds of those funds are used for operations, and one-third was used to pay toward the bond. I'm happy that they asked for just half instead of the whole two-thirds to operate, and even with, even with the two-thirds, our convention center operates at, at a lesser rate than our competitors like Greenville and Charleston, even with the two-thirds, just for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I just want to pose two questions for, for us to consider, and that is, if, if we don't, Ms. Thomas, don't go, don't go too far, okay? If, if we don't, if we don't consider this recommendation, then what happens to those funds?
They are held in the accommodations tax account. If we do consider this recommendation for this year, of course, we do know what this would be. Moving forward in future years, binding for fifty percent could be significantly more money.
And so, to that point, the, the convention center is only asking for fifty percent of those funds, and the remaining fifty percent would stay in that accommodations tax, I guess, account?
Correct. Accommodations tax can be used for anything that derives tourism within Richland County.
And so, with that being said, then, at some point, I would think that this body would have to determine what we would do with that remaining fifty percent.
Yes, ma'am, that is correct. The other question here is how long we would want to do the fifty percent? Is this a one-year allocation, or is this a perpetual allocation? Or do we consider it annually?
Understood. So I, I would just like to, you know, just go on the record to say that when this was, when these funds were considered based upon what I'm learning and being the liaison for the convention center, when those funds were set aside and we, we created this, this fund, it was specifically for the convention center, and noting that the convention center has some major needs for expansion and such, and so as we move forward with deciding what we do with that fifty percent, I would like for us to keep in mind, you know, how we got here with those funds, and that this may be a good way for us to set aside some additional funding, whether it's, you know, the full fifty percent or a portion of it to, to do some other things and expansion and to support the convention center for their future needs. Thank you.
Ms. Baron, Mr. Branham, back to you.
Is the request that was recommended by the committee for one year?
Mr. Branham, it's not, and so I was waiting for discussion, but I would like to pose a substitute motion that addresses that, but I wanted everybody to get through their discussion.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Substitute motion, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you. A substitute motion is to approve the request at fifty percent and, and for it to, for council to review this request on a yearly basis moving forward.
Second.
Second.
Properly second, any discussion? None? Clerk, take the vote.
Branham.
Yes.
Pugh.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
No.
Tratio. Weaver.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item on the agenda is, well, before we move on, is reconsideration required for that?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Move to reconsider.
Second.
Also, is reconsideration required for item fourteen B as well? That was the solid waste and recycling landfill capital expansion item?
Yes, sir.
So reconsider, entertain a motion for reconsideration, items fourteen B and C.
Some moved.
Second.
It moved to properly second. Any discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk?
Branham.
No.
Pugh.
No.
McBride.
No.
Livingston.
No.
Tratio. Weaver.
No.
Baron.
No.
Walker.
No.
Mackey.
No.
English.
No.
Newton.
No.
Motion fails.
Next item on the agenda, item fifteen, third reading items, fifteen A, An Ordinance Authorizing the Levying of Ad Valorem Property Taxes, which together with the prior year's carryover and other state levies and any additional amount appropriated by the Richland County Council prior to July one, twenty-twenty-three, will provide sufficient revenues for the operation of Richland County Government during the period from July first, twenty-twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. I entertain a motion.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
It's been moved to properly second. Any discussion? You recognize, Councilman Weaver?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I know this is third reading, and I can't remember how I voted the first two times, but all this is doing is just saying we're collecting property taxes, correct? There's no increase or anything, right?
I don't believe there's an increase, but we do...
Just make sure.
But we do have the Honorable Paul Brawley, who is our duly elected auditor, who is present this evening. And good evening to you, Auditor Brawley. Could you give us any assurances that this is not an increase? At least in response to Councilman Weaver's question. Come on down, Mr. Auditor.
Good evening, Councilmember. This is Chair of Council. This is not an increase from what was discussed during the spring. This is the same mileage increases that was proposed during the budget session.
Well, changes and no thrills, right?
No changes, no thrills.
All right.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Okay. Any additional questions or comments? All right. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brannum.
No.
Pugh.
Yes.
McBride. Livingston.
Yes.
Tratio. Weaver.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mr. Chair? And the motion for reconsideration?
Move to reconsider.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Was that seconded? I just heard a lot of voices.
It was seconded.
But seconded. All right. Any discussion?
I just want to say it's always thrilling to hear from our auditor, Mr. Chair.
Absolutely. I co-sign that, Ms. Newton. Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Brannum.
No.
Pugh.
No.
McBride. Livingston.
I just reconsideration. I'm sorry. No.
Weaver.
No.
Baron.
No.
Walker.
No.
Mackey.
No.
English.
No.
Newton.
No.
Motion fails.
Livingston, no. See you, Mr. Auditor. All right. Next item on the agenda is item 15B, in ordinance of the County Council of Richland County, South Carolina, revising the zoning map of unincorporated Richland County, South Carolina, to change the zoning designation for all real property located in the unincorporated areas of Richland County as described herein and providing for severability and an effective date. I entertain a motion.
Chair.
Recognize, Councilman Brannum?
Thank you. I believe this originates from my motion, and it is still, the draft ordinance is lacking an effective date. And I had the opportunity to speak with staff and some of the leadership as well about what would be an appropriate date for the staff to have time to prepare for implementation and enforcement of the new map. And so I guess it's my own friendly amendment, an amendment to my own motion to include an effective date of February 14, 2024, which is 90 days out from the anticipated third vote on the Planning Commission's text amendments to the Land Development Code. And I'll just say briefly that it's a good map. This is a map that really minimizes disruption to property owners in Richland County. Thank you.
Brannum's there, second to the amendment.
Second.
Moved to properly second. Any discussion? You recognize, Ms. Newton, and then Mr. Livingston.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I just want to acknowledge, as we have several times, that, and Mr. Jensen, I'm trying to make direct eye contact with you in case I say something incorrect, that as part of this process, that once there is an effective date, that any resident who was previously zoned rural would have up to a year where the county would waive their fee to have their zoning reconsidered. If you could just address that again, the effective date is not now. We still have to approve the text. Just want to provide those assurances for our residents.
Mr. Chair?
You recognize, Mr. Jensen?
Thank you, A.C. Jensen, for the record. Ms. Newton, that is part of the proposed text amendments. So actually, there would be, in the language of the proposed text amendments, an enabling section that would make that possible. So that would be something that the council would need to adopt as part of the text amendments. And I have, the consultant has already drafted. I reviewed it. And so once we have first reading of the text, I can circulate that to the council and to the public for your review.
Thank you, Mr. Jensen. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Livingston?
I just want to know, I want to hear staff say whether or not February 14 is considered a reasonable date, effective date for you all to work with.
You recognize, Mr. Jensen?
Thank you. Yes, sir. 90 days is a reasonable time for us to mount a media campaign. Obviously, the community is already very engaged in this process. We work and discuss with concerned citizens on a regular basis. So I am very comfortable with 90 days.
Mackey, and then Ms....
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Two points. One, I just want to clarify in addition to your comments about the 90-day period. And I know you said a media campaign, but I want to ensure that it's a public education campaign as well, that we're not just putting it out there. We're making sure that we are educating our residents on this information, because it is a lot of information that, you know, the common person doesn't deal with every day. So just want to make sure we're on the same page with that. Second question.
Oh, please.
Okay.
Is that a question or statement, Ms. Mackey?
It was a statement, but he looked like he wanted to respond.
Want to respond to it?
Yes, I misspoke. You are correct. A public education campaign is a better term.
Okay. I don't know about better. I just hope that we educate as we are out here. So the other question I had is in relation to this 90-day period as we're transitioning. Is there any moratorium on any rezoning requests proposed in this schedule?
Mr. Chair?
You recognize?
Thank you. I would actually like to defer to the county attorney. In reading through the language that his office prepared, in my opinion, yes, that there is language in there that would prevent actions from occurring, such as rezonings and applications, until that occurred. But the attorney can speak to that more accurately.
Mr. Wright, you recognize?
Yes. What would happen is during that 90-day period, any applications would have to be under the new rules and not under the interim procedures as they are right now. So at that point, since the Planning Commission, they have their swearing-ins and everything, basically the beginning of the year, the first real meeting of the Planning Commission would be after it would take effect. So that period, there wouldn't be anything that would give an opportunity, basically for the old things going through the process right now, through the old interim procedures, to be finished up so that by the time the effective date comes, we could have the new procedures in effect, and people would apply under the new procedures.
So just, Mr. Chair?
You recognize?
Just to really clarify that and make that simple, throughout the 90-day period, is there any point in time where someone cannot come and submit a rezoning request?
You can submit a rezoning request, but not under the current procedures. It would be under the new ones.
But you can submit it, and we will accept those. It will just be under the new, and we will, there won't be a time where we're stopping any acceptance of requests.
It wouldn't be approved until the thing, but you can submit the request, right?
Thank you.
Ms. Baron?
Thank you. I just want to just make sure to reiterate the point, whatever this education campaign, whatever it turns out to be, that it is indeed just that. Because we know that there is a group of citizens and residents that are fully engaged in this process and probably know it better than some of us and some of staff members. And so as that is the case, there is still a large number of people who don't have a clue. And it is important to me and to many people in Richland County that they know exactly what's going on. And so I would really like for us to take another look. And I know we have, I was in with the communications team today, and I was singing their praises. They're doing a great job, but there's still some non-traditional ways that we have to reach people who their lives are going to be impacted by the decision that we make with these changes. So I just really want to reiterate that point, to make sure that we do everything that we possibly can to make sure that people understand what we're doing and where we're going to be. So if they have any questions, if they're coming to, if you guys are doing the roadshow, that it's just not, it's not one of those things that we're going through the motion with, but we are indeed trying to make sure that we get people out to address their needs. Thank you.
You, Ms. Baron. Mr. Jensen, you know, there's an old adage that goes, "Speak now, or forever hold your peace." So my question to you is, are you certain that February 14, or that 90-day period, is ample time? Or do you need an additional two weeks? I'm not suggesting anything. I just want to make sure that you are, that you all are confident that, you know, February 14, or that 90-day window, is more than sufficient.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Oh, absolutely.
Yes.
It's a question.
We will, as staff, we will make it work within the timeframe that council allows to us. 90 days is a reasonable time. Two more weeks would be, is great also, but we can make it work within the timeframe that you have set.
Right. Like an additional two weeks, or do you, just tell us that way? Look, I don't want to, we don't want to pin you in a corner, okay? I mean, we want this to go live and effective, we want it effective as soon as possible. But I'm just asking. Just want to make sure.
My corner is telling me take the two weeks. So, you know, you always listen, when you're in the ring, you listen to your corner man. So I'll take it if you'll give it to me.
Mr. Brannum, you recognize?
This is a leap year. So there are 29 days in February. I was looking at the calendar, the 28th. So can we, let's just say March 1st.
And so that's, would that be an amendment? Well, substitute motion to, so substitute motion, say March 1, 2024. Is there a second for that?
Second.
It's moved to properly second. Any discussion? You recognize, Ms. Newton?
Thank you. I just have a request that, with that communication, that at least for council members, tonight has already gone. But if it could start tomorrow, because there's just been outlining the new dates that we've talked about in terms of you'll be able to do this from this time to that time, I think it's important to get it out to the citizens, and also think it's important to get it to us. I couldn't remember poor Ms. Thomas's name, so you know I'm not going to remember these dates tomorrow. And we all have to, you know, be able to get the word out to our constituents. So again, if we could have an updated timeline tomorrow, that would be fantastic.
Thank you, Ms. Jensen. All right. Additional discussion? Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brannum.
Yes.
Pugh.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Tratio. Weaver.
Yes.
Baron.
No.
Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion passes.
And a motion for reconsideration?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second. It's moved to properly second. Any discussion? There being none? Madam Clerk?
Brannum.
No.
Pugh.
No.
McBride.
No.
Livingston.
No.
Weaver.
No.
Baron.
Yes.
Walker.
No.
Mackey.
No.
English.
No.
Newton.
No.
Motion fails.
Next item on the agenda is 15C, in ordinance affirming the provisions of ordinance number 58-16HR related to the Office of Small Business Opportunity. Entertain a motion.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Moved to properly second. Any discussion? You recognize, Ms. McBride?
Mr. Chair, I really want to thank the committee for this motion. And I think this is something that we need, and I think it's an excellent idea. My question is, with the new office and the director, would that be an elevation of salaries? Would there be additional staffing? Or will it stay the same?
I have a question for you, Mr. Pugh or Mr. Brown?
It's not for Mr. Pugh, but it was for...
Were you looking that direction? I know he chairs the committee, so I wasn't sure if you directed to him. You recognize, Mr.?
I just want to tell Ms. McBride, thank you.
You know you earned it if I said it.
Mr. Brown, you recognize?
Yes, sir. So, Mr. Chair, there are two items. In short, it sounds like as a part of that, this change, your expectation would be, which I sort of assumed that this office would then have a director. So what we would need to do is, we can make some adjustments this current cycle, but we would just need to make adjustments going forward with the new fiscal budget. But we can work within what we have now. So the short answer is yes, in terms of the directorate position. But just understand that that was not previously a part of last year's fiscal budget or this current year's fiscal budget. So we'll have to just modify the budget internally. And then when we address this with council, it'll look like it's a new position, if you will, but it will be a change based off the ordinance change, if that's clear.
It's clear. There's no questions on this item or comments? There being none, Madam Clerk?
Brannum.
Yes.
Pugh.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston. Tratio. Weaver.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Consideration?
Move for reconsideration?
Second.
Properly second. Any discussion? There being none? Madam Clerk?
Brannum.
No.
Pugh.
No.
McBride.
No.
Livingston. Weaver.
No.
Baron.
No.
Walker.
No.
Mackey.
No.
English.
No.
Newton.
No.
Motion fails.
Next item on the agenda is item 16, first reading items, 16A, in ordinance to adopt the text amendment recommendations of the Richland County Planning Commission to the 2021 Land Development Code, which will regulate development in the unincorporated areas of Richland County. Entertain a motion. So moved.
Second.
It's moved to properly second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
You recognize, Ms. Baron?
Thank you. As this is the text, which is a different portion of the LDC, I just want to state that initially, I'm going to still vote no. And that is because there are some things that were stated previously about making some of the revisions and the modifications. And when I see those revisions and modifications, then my no will turn into a yes.
Thank you, Ms. Baron. Additional discussion? You recognize, Mr. Brannum?
Thank you, Ed. On this as well, I just wanted to, again, amend my own original motion, as it were, to insert an effective date, which I know we don't have the body of the ordinance draft right now, but it's by title only. But I want to make part of the motion that the effective date would be that same March 1, 2024 date so that the text and the map can go live at the same time.
Mr. Brannum's there, second?
Second.
It's moved to properly second. Any discussion? You, back to you, Mr. Brannum.
Thank you. Just very briefly, obviously, I've been very involved with this process. I want to say that this process has been an example of government responding to the public. It started with county council making the decision about two years ago to send this back to the Planning Commission for some further review and incorporation of the public input. And they did just that, and it came back to county council. It's now been through the Development Services Committee. I feel really good about it. This isn't really about a bunch of technical stuff as far as my approach and with some of the recommendations that have been made to amend the text. Really, I think it preserves the appropriate process for review when proposed changes are brought forth. I think it creates more transparency. It creates more consistent outcomes in development when it does happen. And it helps with, you know, having harmonious development. And then it provides greater protections of agricultural lands and communities. And I'm really proud of that, really excited for these amendments, and I hope you'll vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional discussion? You recognize, Mr. Weaver?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Very quickly, Ms. Chairman, I'm just going to say I can't vote for this again tonight. But it is no reflection on the Planning Commission. I think they've done a lot of work on it. I understand that, and I understand council members who are responding to people in their districts. I just view this as a government taking of property without compensation. Because for folks who are trying to develop their property, and we're changing the rules, but we're not compensating them for changing the rules, and I just think that's unfair. And so I'm not able to vote for it, and I just want to explain the rationale for my vote. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Oh, thank you. Any additional questions or discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brannum.
Yes.
Pugh.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston. Weaver.
No.
Baron.
No.
Walker.
Uh, yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Apologize for hesitation. I'm still stuck on Councilman Weaver's pronouncement of a government taking. So I was kind of stuck, I was stuck there. Constitutional law class kind of took me back there. Next item on the agenda is item 17, reporter of the Administration and Finance Committee. That will be given by the Honorable Jessica Mackey. Madam Vice Chair, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have item 17A, which is a motion for approval of Adventure Children's Museum Hospitality Tax Request for Facility Improvements and Enhancements to Improve the Safety and Attract New Visitors at the Museum. The Administration and Finance Committee met and forwarded this item to council without a recommendation, so that the full body could consider and make a recommendation here tonight at this meeting. Mr. Chair, I would like to state, as the maker of this motion, and currently as the county liaison on the Adventure Children's Museum Board, I do want to point out to my colleagues that a full request, along with renderings of the proposed exhibit and safety features are in the packet, but also state that Adventure has a new executive director that has come on within the past year and has worked really hard with really revitalizing Adventure and bringing it back to life in a way that we have not seen it before. And so it is a great attraction locally here for families and those with young children. And as a mother of two young children, I have frequented Adventure and know many others that continue to utilize Adventure for the many educational tools that it provides to our community, as well as continues to attract visitors from around our state and out of state as they come. And so I do ask colleagues to consider this request for improving this attraction using hospitality dollars.
Thank you. Vice Chair, there is specific, I guess, amount that's being asked, or requested, rather?
Yes, sir. If you look within your packet, on page 336, there is an introductory letter before going into the full packet. The request amount is 1.75 million from the Hospitality Tax Fund.
Mackey, since this came before full council, I guess, without a recommendation, I'm assuming this is your motion at this point, right?
Yes, sir, it is. It is my motion, yes, sir.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved to properly second. Any discussion? All right. You recognize, Ms. English?
I just want to thank the committee for bringing this forward. I have been working with Adventure Museum for years now. One of the things that they have always done, and this is with being a mental health counselor, and that they provided inclusion into the community for children and their families with developmental disabilities. And you all know that that weighs heavily on my heart, so I want to thank you for bringing this forward and the vision that they have going forward to include and to increase safety for all of those children. So thank you.
Oh, Ms. Newton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'll just say that while my Adventure days came to an end some time ago, and my oldest son turned 17 on Saturday, we did have a lot of good times at Adventure and ringing in the new year with Eddie, et cetera. And so I am happy to support this resolution. I guess I just want to ask the body, we're collecting these H-tax funds, we have this balance. I would like to see us have a more fulsome discussion about what we do with the remainder of the funds, so that we can look at making a significant investment that will move Richland County forward. So again, you know, happy, happy to support Adventure. If we're taking these funds from our citizens, I feel like we owe it to them to deploy it for its uses and look forward to future conversations. Thank you.
Er, with all the, you know, sentiments, so I'm sorry, Ms. McBride. Well, you know, no, 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 you know, no. It's my, my role is to facilitate the conversation, not dominate it. So you're recognized, Ms. McBride, right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I too want to thank Adventure for the work that they're doing in Richland County. And I have always been an avid supporter of Adventure. And Mr. Drew, you out there? A coworker who worked with me in education, and I know that he's doing an excellent job there. So this has been a very difficult decision for me, because I support Adventure. My question, my concern is that we do have a process for funding initiatives. And this council has really promoted within the last, well, since the budget. They've tried to promote going through a process. And I did not vote on the budget, because I did not think that there was a fair equitable process during our budget period, and particularly with our grants. And now this comes before me, where I'm asked to make a decision, one that I normally would agree with, that, to make a decision that was denied some other projects, that were actually projects in underd served, underserved communities, and projects that were run by minority organizations, and projects that prevented, or that were, that were made to prevent or help to prevent juvenile delinquency in a high-crime area, and this council did not find the need or to vote for these projects. So it troubled me, that troubled me, and I'm at the position now of saying that I don't want to do to Adventure what was done to these projects. But at the same time, the process is not a fair process, not from Adventure, but from the county. Because during our budget period, we would accept any requests coming in. And that's what I told, I was told the budget period was about. Now, for extenuating circumstances, then I see the need to come for funding outside of the budget period. And I'm still torn right now in terms of what is needed, and what is fair, and what is transparent. So I'm not, haven't decided how I'm going to vote on this, but I do want to let the community know that I have concerns about not, others not being able to come or not knowing that they could come to the county at any time and apply for funds. And particularly, 1.75 million dollars is a lot of money. And these others had to write a dissertation or some maybe a thesis to get 10,000. So I am really, really concerned about the process that is being used. And I would hope that, like Ms. Newton, that we would find a better process, a better procedure, to ensure that everyone has the opportunity to apply for these funds. So my major concern now is that this is not a transparent, and it has nothing to do with Adventure, but it's with the council, that this is not a transparent process. And I think that in the area of tourism, it is so much that Richland County needs to do. But we need to do, have a strategic plan in looking at how we're going to use these hospitality funds. We can't cherry pick here and cherry pick there. We need to have a plan in place, because we don't have anything new. We got Adventure, thank God for Adventure, thank God for the zoo. Let me say that again. Thank God for the zoo and Adventure, for giving us the opportunity to bring tourism in. So now we need to look at, what about, what's going on in your district, in the Northeast? You know, everything's downtown. We need to spread the wealth. So I don't mean to get in a preaching mode, but it's just heavy on my heart. It's heavy on my heart, and I hope that my council members, my colleagues, are hearing what I am saying, that let's do some strategic planning, let's decide how we're going to use these funds, and let's look at an equitable, a transparent, a fair, and efficient way of using our hospitality funds. And so that is my concern, and at the point of voting, I don't know which way I'm going. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Ms. McBride, you recognize, Ms. Mackey?
Thank you. Ms. McBride, thank you so much for your comments. I truly appreciate always when you provide us your thoughts and wisdom on different issues. I too am definitely concerned about process, and that is one of the reasons why I created the Community Impact Grant Committee and really worked with the body to develop a true process for nonprofits moving forward. And I think we have shown that there is a transparency now in our process and how we fund nonprofits. And just as much as I am created, or committed, I should say, to the process, and having a process and explaining that process, I'm just as committed to the facts. And the facts are that right now, there is not a process in place that I am aware of that states to request hospitality funding, that you have to only do it in the budget process. And so I do want us to make sure that as we talk about process and transparency, that we are using facts. And the facts still remain. There is no rule, ordinance, or any process that states you can only ask for hospitality tax dollars during the budget process. However, I always welcome process, and I would love to work with you in the Strategic Planning Committee to develop that process and a strategic plan to look at how to encourage tourism throughout the county. I represent Northeast Columbia, and I would love to see more stuff out there. The reality is, downtown is where the zoo is, is where Adventure is, is where the museum of art is, where our state museum is, where many of our attractions lie within the city point of the city and downtown Columbia. Now, it attracts many visitors, and our job has been to continue to support those attractions to bring in additional revenues to our state. We talked about that earlier tonight when we looked at the convention center and continued to support them. And we work with many other organizations, like you mentioned, the zoo, who we all love and support, but that is funded through tax dollars, on tax bills that residents pay. Hospitality tax funding for improvements at Adventure do not increase tax dollars or our property tax bill for our residents. This request is for 1.75 million, and I understand that is a lot of money, and I definitely want us to talk about that, have that conversation, because we should be responsible with the money that we collect. Currently, right now, in our hospitality tax budget, we have 13 million dollars. I believe that Adventure is coming with a reasonable request for 1.75 million to improve safety features and then bring in a new exhibit to attract visitors that will then in turn bring in additional accommodation tax, hospitality tax, and more spending within our county. So I definitely support process. I support equitably, equitably, how do you say it? That's your word, what is it?
Equitable.
Equitable, thank you. Development of tourism across our county, and I definitely want to work with you, but I don't think that right now punishing Adventure for a process that does not exist is fair. But I definitely want to work to develop a process, if that is what the body feels that we need to do moving forward. But we cannot hold them to a standard that did not exist before now.
I need to respond.
Oh, Jesus Christ.
I just need to respond.
All right, all right, Ms. McBride. Ms. McBride, and then Ms. Newton.
Okay, I must respond, and I could take one by one, but I'm not going to do it.
Please, no, Ms. McBride. But consolidate, consolidate.
I'll do a real quick one. And that is why, because we do not have a process in place that I stated that it was a very difficult position for me. That's why I stated that upfront, so let's clear that. The other thing is that if we're going to do this, then let's let everybody know right now, those that are out there that can hear me, that the funds are available for you to come in and apply, so let's be transparent and fair. If you want to be transparent, that's the way to do it. And again, I support Adventure, and I think it's a great idea, I think we need it, but we must start planning, doing strategic planning. So that's my point, and that was, sometimes I tell you, and I don't always get the votes I need, but I hope I plant a seed for you all to understand and follow. And later, there will be the changes that we can bring about. So again, I have no problems, because we do not have a process, and that's why I stated that I had not decided how I was going to vote.
Thank you, Ms. McBride. Madam Vice Chair, you had your hand, are you responding to that, or?
Oh, yes, sir. I would just want to say that, again, I welcome it. I will schedule a Strategic Planning Committee next month, and I encourage you and all other council members that are interested in creating a process to please show up, and let's start making the process.
Newton, Livingston, and Councilman Weaver, and, you know, I was going to, you know, profess my love and affinity for Eddie tonight, but I guess that's been taken off the table. Ms. Newton?
I just, just, just to be quick, as I've already stated, I love myself a process and welcome the conversation, and think that we need to have it and have a little bit of heartburn about this. But for the benefit of the public, there's just one thing that I want to make clear, that for this, what we are talking about are H-tax funds. And so while it's true that this is not coming in the regular budget process, I just want our constituents to be very clear that there are state statutes that we have to follow in terms of what is eligible for H-tax funds, that council vets projects to make sure that they comply and that funds are given out as that compliance is verified, and there's also reporting. And I don't say that to take away from any of the comments that anybody made. I just want to make sure that the public knows that this is not a willy-nilly doling out of any kind of funds, that there is a great deal of scrutiny and reporting that's attached to this. And I'll say amen to all the things that I agree with that have been said on the other end, and if anybody wants me to call for the question while I'm talking, I'm happy to do it. Okay, they want to talk?
Well, Mr. Livingston has been sitting here patiently, and Councilman Weaver wants to get in on the action, so after those two, I will be calling for the question. Councilman Livingston?
I changed my mind, I have nothing to say.
Councilman Weaver?
I call for the question, Mr. Chair.
All right, that's non-negotiable. Madam Clerk, let's take the vote.
Brannum.
Yes.
Pugh.
I recuse myself, because a group that I'm currently doing business with is in talks with doing business with Adventure.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mr. Chair?
I'm sorry. Mr. Tracchio?
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, after, I had to step away, but I just wanted to let you all know that I'm back now.
I'd have you back, Mr. Tracchio.
Thank you.
Do we reconsider? All right. Is there a second? It's moved to properly second. Any discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk?
Brannum.
No.
Pugh.
Accused.
McBride. Livingston.
No.
Tracchio. Weaver.
Since I didn't vote on the, yet, on the first one, I won't vote on the reconsideration.
Yes, ma'am. Weaver.
No.
Baron.
No.
Walker.
No.
Mackey.
No.
English.
No.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion fails.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to all of my colleagues for your support. I do encourage you, if you have not been to Adventure recently, please be sure to visit. The new CEO will give you a tour, and I promise you, you will be impressed. Next up, Mr. Chair, is 17B, Approval of Paid Parental Leave Policy. The Administration and Finance Committee discussed this on our September 26 committee meeting. And the committee recommends council approve the proposed paid parental leave policy that is included in your packet for regular, part-time, and full-time county employees. The committee did propose to amend the policy to include additional language that addresses paid leave for an employee experiencing a stillbirth, and to amend the language regarding placement of a foster child as follows. Elder employees will receive a maximum of six weeks of paid parental leave for the placement of a foster child 12 months of age or younger. This policy will go into effect January 1, 2024, for all Richland County employees. Mr. Chair, that concludes my recommendation. I'm happy to have discussion if needed.
Heard the recommendation of the committee. Any questions or discussion? You recognize, Ms. Newton?
All right, I did read the briefing, but I would just love it if someone in staff could speak to this and how it fits in with either our HR initiatives and/or budget or plans that we're going to do.
Harley is present. Ms. Harley, if you don't mind, would you please come down? Thank you, Director Harley. Thank you, Director Harley.
Foremost, want to say thank you to council for voting to bring forth this parental leave policy. I think this policy definitely aligns with operational excellence and that it will be a great recruiting tool for us as we continue to recruit professionals to Richland County to do the great work that we desire to do. With this policy, one of the benefits, I think, that we see right now, it is very hard financially for young families to start off and to purchase homes, but I think this policy will, number one, will give them some financial protection versus them having to start work and try to accumulate sick leave or annual leave to take all of that leave when they are having a child. We've also, in this policy, included an equivalent benefit for the co-parent, and I think that creates an opportunity for diversity and inclusion because you'll have both parents that will be able to take the time to bond with the child and with one another and get prepared to come back to the workplace. So I think that this is going to have an immediate impact on the organization and definitely help with recruitment and retention.
Thank you, and I think that this is a great policy. I'm always a little bit leery of us being up here and saying what's going to happen out there without also hearing from staff, so thank you.
You, any additional questions? You recognize, Mr. Livingston?
Can you talk a little bit about how consistent this policy is with the state policy?
Yes, I will say this policy is very consistent with the state policy. One benefit that we have included that the state does not is the state only allows two weeks for the co-parent, we will be allowing six weeks for the co-parent. Another differentiation that we have with our policy is that we will not increase the amount of leave if the employee has sick leave or if they have annual leave, or if there's a holiday or a day that employees are taking due to weather. However, there's many similarities in our policy, but those are two of the major differences.
Mr. Chair, can I also point out the state's policy does not include the language related to stillbirth as well?
That is correct. And I do also want to add too, we will do some additional research with legal regarding the language of stillbirth, because of course, this is not a paternity leave, but it is parental leave, so it's not basically a medical leave policy. That is where the employees would use their FMLA and their disability leave for that.
Additional comments, questions? Ms. McBride, you recognize?
I know. I just think it's a very good policy, and, I mean, I tried not to say anything, and that I'm really proud of South Carolina for at least leading the way in one area, so I'm very proud of South Carolina and for Richland County in following and exceeding that. So thank you.
You're welcome.
You recognize, Ms. Mackey?
I just want to add, just for the record, because Ms. McBride is right, we're proud of South Carolina, but I think we should be additionally proud of Richland County and this council. There are 46 counties within the state of South Carolina, and with passing this, we become only the second in the state to offer county employees paid parental leave, and I believe that we should all be proud of more than what South Carolina is doing.
I said the county, you may not have heard. I did say the county.
I mean, we're applauding, and the vote hasn't taken place yet. We first in the Midlands, right? If this passes, we'd be first in the Midlands?
Correct, the only other county is Florence County, so yes, sir.
All right, any additional comments or questions about this item, or for Ms. Harley? All right, Councilman Weaver is eager to vote, so Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brannum?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Racio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Do we need to reconsider that? Move to reconsider?
Second.
Properly second, that's item 17B. Any discussion? There'd be a none, Madam Clerk?
Brannum?
No.
Pugh?
No.
McBride?
No.
Livingston?
No.
Racio?
No.
Weaver?
No.
Baron?
No.
Walker?
No.
Mackey?
No.
English?
No.
Newton?
No.
Motion fails.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next item on the agenda is items C and D that are property inquiry items, and I would like, if possible, for the administrator or the county attorney to speak to these.
Both of these items scheduled for executive session?
They were, and so I don't know if we need to go in executive session to discuss them again, so that's why I wanted to allow them to speak to it.
Mr. Wright?
Mr. Chair?
Or, well, Mr. Brown, before I get to you, let me just get to Mr. Wright, since it seems like it's a question that has legal implications.
Mr. Wright? Yes, I think that, as far as, the reason why it would be in executive session is that there is some private information that would be privy, you would be privy to that the general public wouldn't be, so that's the executive session part. But if Mr. Brown wants to speak to some of the things in general that he can do.
Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir, and Mr. Chair, members of council, in your packet, you should have received a couple of items that talked about the acquisition of properties that the county had, how much we purchased them for, that type of information, requests from the actual parties that are both private parties. I just wanted to share that this particular action, if the council so chooses to approve it, would follow a pattern of where the administrator will be authorized to enter to negotiations, that process also results in information coming back to council before any agreements are entered into for an actual disposition of the property. So even if the council chose to allow me to enter to negotiations, it does not automatically mean that the property will be sold, because ultimately, the council receives the information, considers it, and then makes a determination as to whether or not the council agrees upon the terms. So, I just wanted to share that with you, since I will not be able to be in executive session on these items.
Mr. Chair? Yeah, so, I guess to point this out, C and D in our committee meeting were discussed in executive session. As Mr. Brown stated, you know, no action was taken, he was moving forward, and he plans to come back to council. Is there, I guess, a desire to discuss anything else, Patrick? Do we need to go into this discussion to give council more information? Because nothing is in the packet, for the record.
Yes, I think the only thing we would really talk about in executive session is what the actual offers are and that information, but you have the documents, so you can look at those, but as Mr. Brown stated, this isn't actually approving like a price or anything, because that would have to come back before you once an agreement was negotiated.
There's nothing, no action required tonight, right? This is more so just for information.
There will be action, Mr. Chair. I apologize if you can't, if I interrupted your meeting.
No, no, continue on.
It will require action, the action that normally takes place if the council wants to consider it, is that you would authorize the county administrator to enter negotiations with the requesters and to return to county council, you know, with that information. So again, nothing is finalized by any votes tonight, regardless of what direction you go in, but if I negotiate, I'll ultimately come back to you as many times until you are satisfied that you are ready to make a decision one way or the other.
Sounds like we're going to need an executive session, but I don't think we go into it right now, I think we come back to it. Well, because administrator just said that he wants us to give him some direction tonight, so I don't think.
Can I make a motion?
Well, Mr. Wright said he wants to discuss what the offer is.
I don't have to. If y'all don't need the information, that's fine, because what would have, you would have to do tonight is authorize the administrator to enter negotiations for these properties. In the committee.
But if everyone, we're eager, if you want to vote on it without going to executive session, go ahead and make the motion. I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair, or if Mr. Livingston wants to make the motion.
Mr. Chair, move that we authorize the administrator to enter negotiation, reference item 17C and D and bring that back to full council consideration.
Second. Move to properly second, discussion. Ms. Baron, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just for information, could we have staff to remind us how these items came to the committee?
Yes, ma'am. So originally, I received a request of interest in these properties, both properties listed on C and D. I then informed the county council just on a regular administrator's report, just for information, and then at a following meeting, the item was listed on the county administrator's report again. The item was then received a recommendation each from the council members representing the area where these properties are listed in. Those individual council members recommended or submitted a motion during a regular meeting for those items to go to a committee. Then the item went to committee, and now they are before you as a part of that process.
Else, Ms. Baron?
No, not at this time.
Any additional questions, Ms. Newton?
Thank you. So just confirming, if we went to executive session and heard whatever we heard, the action would be to direct the administrator to, hold on, let me back up. It appears to me that the potential outcome of voting yes on this motion is similar to what the outcome would be if we went to executive session.
Oh.
Yeah, I know. Never mind.
I don't know, yeah.
Okay.
But, you know, but the body wants to vote, so we're voting. All right, any additional questions or discussion? All right, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brannum?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
I don't have enough information, no.
Livingston?
Yes.
Racio? Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
No.
Walker?
No.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
No.
Newton?
No.
Motion fails.
So, yes, you recognize, Ms. English?
Is it proper for me to move this to executive session and vote later?
Oh, it's already on.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, you recognize, Mr. Wright?
It's already been voted on, so it's been voted, they've been voted down, so for this meeting, it's done.
Thank you, sir.
Next item on the agenda is item eight, I'm sorry, Madam Vice Chair, that concludes your report.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Sorry.
You recognize, Ms. Newton?
So because it was just voted down, we can't even discuss it?
Well, it's our, you can't take any action. If you want to discuss it, you can, it can be discussed in executive session, but you've already made the decision.
Okay, move to reconsider.
Second.
Properly second, any discussion? There'd be a none, Madam Clerk?
Brannum?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Racio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, so this is C and D, it's already on the agenda for executive session, so I'm going to move on to the next item on the agenda, and these two items will follow this second executive session along with another item that we have for the second executive session this evening. Motion to go to executive session?
No, no, I'm talking when you get to it.
Well, I mean, well, it's been reconsidered, so here we are. So you all want to go into executive session three times tonight? Or do you want to go into executive session twice tonight?
Carry on, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is item 18, Report of the Economic Development Committee. That will be given by the Honorable Paul Livingston. Councilman, you recognize?
Item 18A, Authorization of Execution of Liberal Fee in Lieu of Ever-Learnt Taxes and incentive agreement by between Richland County, South Carolina, and Project Truck to provide for a payment or fee in lieu of taxes, authorizing certain infrastructure credits, and other related matters. This is the first reading ordinance item, and the committee's recommendation will be approved.
All right, you heard the recommendation of the committee. Any questions, discussion? There'd be a none. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brannum?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Racio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, Mr. Livingston?
Item 18B, that's the committee in negotiation fee in lieu of ever-learnt taxes, agreement between Richland County and Project Truck. This is just a resolution, it's a companion to the order you just passed, committed recommendations.
All right, you heard the recommendation of the committee. Any questions or discussion? There'd be a none, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brannum?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Racio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
That completes the report of the Economic Development Committee. Mr. Livingston, next item on the agenda is item 19, Report of the Rules and Appointments Committee that will be given by the Honorable Gretchen Baron. Ms. Baron, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We do have a couple of nominations for appointments. The first nomination for appointment is the Planning Commission. We have two vacancies. The Rules and Appointment Committee recommends for reappointing Mr. Christopher Yonkey, who is presently the chair, as well as an incumbent, and to appoint Mr. Mark Duffy.
The recommendation of the committee, any questions or discussion? There'd be a none? I'm sorry, you recognize, Ms. McBride?
Excuse me, which, that?
I'm sorry, I skipped, I skipped the zoning board appeals. I apologize, so that was for the Planning Commission.
Go ahead, Ms. Baron.
Well, which one are we doing now?
The Planning Commission is the one that I just presented.
Okay, so now I'm back on focus, because I was looking.
That's my, I apologize.
So which, what are the two?
The two is Christopher Yonkey, who is the incumbent, as well as Mark Duffy.
Are we good, Ms. McBride?
Yes, I understand.
All right, any additional questions or discussion? There'd be a none?
I would like to.
You recognize, Ms. McBride?
Yes, I would like to make an amendment and recommend Mr. Bill Malinowski.
Place of whom?
In place of, how long has Mr. Yonkey been on? Do you know? Do you have?
I think he's served, he's served a whole term, five years, four years, going to this, this would be his fifth year going in. He's also presently the chair of the Planning Commission.
Okay, in lieu of two C.
So, Ms. McBride, so I understand, your motion is to appoint Mr. Malinowski or two A and? two A, and...
And two B.
And two B.
Yes.
So you're doing Malinowski in lieu of F, Mr. Duffy, right? Is that your motion?
In lieu of, um...
In lieu of Mark Duffy, right?
Mr. Chair.
You recognize, Ms. Baron?
If I may, I did speak to Mr. Malinowski today, and he has asked to have his name removed from the list.
And I withdraw.
All right, motion back to the original recommendations. Any additional questions or discussions? I hope not. Please take the vote, Madam Clerk.
Brannum?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Tratio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
At the floor, Ms. Baron?
Yes, sir, I don't know if this is appropriate, but one of my fellow committee members, Mr. Brannum, would like to have a point of personal privilege to speak on Mr. Yonkey. I don't know if that...
No, Mr. Brannum, you and I both are practicing attorneys, and this evening the judge is about to give you what you want. You may not want to talk him out of it.
I'm not here to talk anybody on anything. I just wanted to recognize Chris Yonkey, who is here in the chambers today. He is our president, chairman of the Planning Commission. I served with him, had the pleasure of serving with him. He's doing a great job. I've seen the videos online, and he does such a good job of being as clear as he can be, explaining process to the public, and to help the colleagues along as they cycle on to the Planning Commission. So thank you for being here, thank you for your service, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Brannum. This is... Motion for reconsideration, it's still a live ball.
I'd like to continue with my report.
You have the floor, Ms. Baron.
Our next appointment, and this would be A1, which is the Board of Zoning Appeals. We had one vacancy, and the Rules and Appointment Committee recommends Mr. Deonterees.
The recommendation of the committee, any questions or discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk?
Brannum?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Tratio? Weaver?
Yes.
I got you, Ms. Tratio. Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
The item's reconsidered?
Yes, please.
All right, is there a motion?
Move to reconsider.
Second.
Moved to properly second, any discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk?
Brannum?
No.
Pugh?
No.
McBride?
No.
Livingston?
No.
Tratio?
No.
Weaver?
No.
Baron?
No.
Walker?
No.
Mackey?
No.
English?
No.
Newton?
No.
Motion fails.
Ms. Baron?
That concludes my report, sir.
All right, next item on the agenda is item twenty, report of the Coronavirus Ad-Hoc Committee that will be given by the Honorable Gretchen Baron. Ms. Baron, you recognize, ma'am?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have before us a small business category recommendation. Would like to remind this body and the general public, this is a category as a part of the sixteen million dollars that this council has set aside from our ARPA funds to award local nonprofits and businesses. And so with that, we, staff, as well as our third-party vendor, has spent a lot of time in this category. We had an overwhelming response of applications, but when we, when the third-party spent time looking at the applications and reviewing them, many of them, the majority of them, did not qualify. We went back and also asked staff to take a second look and match it up to some local documentation that we had through the Business Service Center, because to qualify for this category, it means that the small business had to show a loss as a result of COVID. So with that, it is the recommendation of the committee to award Kaufman and Company LLC and the thrift store of Greenville, Inc., that DBA's as the Sunshine Thrift Store, forward for desk review, and the recommendation of funding for each organization up to twenty-five thousand dollars each.
All right, you've heard the recommendation of the committee, any questions or discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brannum?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
No.
Livingston?
Yes.
Tratio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
No.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Consideration needed, Ms. Baron?
Move to reconsider?
Second.
It's been moved to properly second, any discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk?
Pugh?
Yes, no, I'm sorry, no.
McBride?
No.
Livingston?
No.
Tratio?
No.
Weaver?
No.
Baron?
No.
Walker?
Oh, yes, I mean, what's the vote? I'm sorry.
Consideration.
No, no.
Mackey?
No.
English?
No.
Newton?
No.
Motion fails.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Baron. Next item on the agenda is report of the Transportation Ad-Hoc Committee, which will be given by the Honorable Overture Walker. Item twenty-one A, excess mitigation bank credit sales. The committee recommends change in the process whereby excess mitigation credit sales can be presented for approval to full council through the administrator's nomination process rather than through the Transportation Ad-Hoc Committee. Staff has informed us that the current two-step process, as far as committee council, puts us at a competitive disadvantage as far as, you know, bank credits making it on, making it to the market in time. So that is the recommendation from the committee. Any questions or discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brannum?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride? Livingston? Tratio? Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next item on the agenda is item twenty-one B, the Transportation Facilities Plan. Committee recommends awarding the professional services contract to Stan Tech Consulting based on the qualifications of the team and the proposal received at the amount of one hundred and ten thousand. That includes a twenty percent contingency for a total of one hundred and thirty-two thousand. Page to the committee. Questions, discussion? You recognize, Mr. Livingston?
Thanks staff for providing and including the package, the scope of service for that particular group. That was helpful.
Also, let me just add as well that, you know, this will allow council to, by hiring a consultant, this would allow council to assess as well as identify our transportation needs countywide. So that's really the, you know, the aim of this specific item. Any additional questions or comments? There being none, Madam Clerk?
Brannum?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Tratio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next item on the agenda is twenty-one C, award of the construction contract for the Alpine Road, resurfacing and sidewalk. Committee recommends awarding the contract to Palmetto Corporation of Conway based on the bid received at an amount of three million, three hundred and twenty-two thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars and fifty-two cents with a ten percent contingency. That brings the total contract amount out to three million, six hundred and fifty-four thousand, eight hundred and eight dollars and eighty-seven cents. Committee recommends approval. Any questions, comments, discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brannum?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Tratio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Move for reconsideration with respect to items twenty-one A, B, and C.
Second.
Moved to properly second, any discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk?
Brannum?
No.
Pugh?
No.
McBride? Livingston?
No.
Tratio?
No.
Weaver?
No.
Baron?
No.
Walker?
No.
Mackey?
No.
English?
No.
Newton?
No.
Motion fails.
And that concludes the report of the Transportation Ad-Hoc Committee. Next item on the agenda is item twenty-two. Ms. Newton, where are you, where I need you?
Mr. Chair.
You recognize?
I was just waiting. Move to approve items twenty-two A through C.
Second.
Moved to properly second, any discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brannum?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Tratio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English? Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Move for reconsideration, sir.
Second.
And Mr. Pugh asked for reconsideration, items twenty-two A, B, and C, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, it's been moved to properly second, any discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brannum?
No.
Pugh?
No.
McBride?
No.
Livingston?
No.
Tratio? Weaver?
No.
Baron?
No.
Walker?
No.
Mackey?
No.
English?
No.
Newton?
No.
Motion fails.
Next item on the agenda is item twenty-two D, authorizing county staff to prepare for a capital project sales tax referendum expected to be held at the 2024 general election pursuant to South Carolina Code annotated section four dash ten dash three hundred to provide for the appointment, composition, powers, and obligations of the commissions and to provide for other related matters. Entertain a motion. Make a motion we approve, Mr. Chair. It's their second.
Second.
It's been moved to properly second, any discussion? All right, there being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brannum?
No.
Pugh?
No.
McBride? Livingston?
No.
Tratio? Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
No.
Walker?
No.
Mackey?
No.
English?
No.
Newton?
No.
Motion fails.
Next item on the agenda is item twenty-two E, authorizing county staff to prepare for a transportation sales tax referendum expected to be held at the 2024 general election pursuant to Title Four, Chapter Thirty-seven of the Code of Laws of South Carolina, nineteen seventy-six as amended, to provide for the establishment of an ad hoc committee and to provide for other related matters. Entertain a motion.
Approve. Second.
It's been moved to properly second, any discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Brannum?
No.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Tratio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And a motion for reconsideration?
Move to reconsider?
It's been moved to properly second, any discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk?
Brannum?
No.
Pugh?
No.
McBride?
No.
Livingston?
No.[1303.52]
Brannum?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston? Tracchio? Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.